Welcome everyone and welcome you to the Tuesday, July 13th, City Council Meeting, Public Hearing. Please join us by imocation and prayer those of which do. I'll ask Councilman Matt to lead us.
Please pray Councilman Matt to the official chaplain of the council.
Amen. Most holy and everlasting Father, darling God, in God's love. Father, you said in your word, except the Lord watch the city. They that watch it, watch and ban. Father, we know that you watch our city, but we pray that you would help us to be vigilant and continue to keep watching and be good stewards of our city, hearts that we love so much. Please keep us in your loving care, protect each and every one, every first responder, all these essential health, and keep us protected, all of our residents. Co sing your love in the name of the Son, Jesus Christ, and plan. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in common.
Thank you. Okay, I agree on our agenda as a motion to waive the reading, pause, and approve of minutes of the June 8th, 2021 regular City Council Meeting and the June 22nd, 2021, special City Council Meeting. Is there such a motion?
So there is.
Okay, community discussion. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And it's all clear. Under item four, presentations of the comments, we've got Jessica James. Ms. James, if you'll come up and please introduce yourself to council and we'll listen to what you've got to say.
Well, good evening. I'm Jessica James. I'm the transportation manager for PDRTA at once. I cover all of areas now that are in enroll. Those of you that don't know, I'm actually Marshall native, one of the names here. So what goes on in Marshall, I still very much share about just like when I came here in New York. Reason for me being here tonight was letter that Don got back May 27th regarding city ordinance or authorizing or making any financial donation or contribution to any public, private, charitable or non-charitable individual or organization. So stating that the previous forgiven funding would be withdrawn. You know, it's short notice. We have not been able to make up that 14,000 dollar deficit. So we're still working on it, really trying. But fiscal year closes June 30th, we open July 1st. We haven't been able to make it up. So we've reached out through several other entities that have jumped in to help. Care South, Carolina Pines, Rookon, Smetos coming to the table. So we're making it up a little, a little handle there. We're asking for reconsideration of it. The ending of that ordinance actually stated that nothing in the chapter except for hitting the city from participation in or making financial contributions to any city, county, state, or federally sponsored special activity or event that is determined by the council to be for general good of community. I would like to support PDRTA as a community. It is the only sort of interrupt pandemic that was not affected. We're still doing over 1,000 rides a month. Most of them are going to work. I believe it was 85%. Tanner going shopping and five were unclosed. So services still needed without making up the deficit. We will have to look at cutting some of this service. The 14,000 leads to about $2 per day. So the extension that was requested and given back in 2019 will probably go back eight to five. We're going to do a public survey as fast as we can, try to see what hours we can try to help out. But without the deficit being covered, that'll be the end result.
What are your normal regular hours of operation before?
Before the addition?
What last fiscal year gets?
All other routes are either eight to four or eight to five. Some routes have the built-in lines. We did do that for Mr. Winston Harrow. He is our bigger dedicated hardware, hard route driver. He doesn't want to wear it, so he wears it. But all the other routes are either eight to four, eight to five with the built-in. We have had several requests to go even longer for kids who want to go to the Y or play extra curios. Still trying to see what we can do there. Donkey County, actually this last night, provided the support we needed to be able to do the connector from Society Hill and Douglasville into Hartsville. Comments that wish to do, wouldn't be there with that people would rather come Hartsville and spend money, go to the parks, the splash pad, whatever, the doctor's office especially, than they go to Florence or Darlington. So they want them here, so we're doing what we can to get them in. During part of that route, it will hit hard. It'll connect in, they can do what they need to do, and we will get them back home. So we're trying to keep that extension because most of them, they have a three o'clock appointment. We shut down at four, we can't get back. So it takes some reconsideration.
And I know you keep up with the ridership. Do you keep up with that particular route or what routes coming into town? How many riders are?
The hard route, like I said, is about 85% going to work. We've got Walmart, most of the big places, Carolina Pines. We've got a few that do, the moral, those teen and children, we pick up and take them places. A lot of us with Creek Road, which is becoming more of a demand response because their needs are kind of outside of the railcars. We have several, what is it now? It used to be right there behind Ice Block, I can't remember what they know what it is. But we do a lot of demand response there. They do groups, they'll like to schedule all their appointments together and then they call us with one ride and we come in the day out of it.
Can you, can you, yes. Right now, your services are free.
They are, but only, we are pushing all of our routes to stay fare-free, especially with the pandemic. We've been do so in all other areas. The only other option for making up the deficit would be to start charging a fare and we're trying really hard to do that. If we did, it would be probably about $1.50, which doesn't sound like a lot, but families are already pin, like they're pitching pennies. We're trying to save money.
You're going to have a penny and a dollar to pay the standard of media.
Right.
Ms. James, how much of the deficit are you trying to make up? You mentioned those people who are coming to the table. What are you talking about?
The original deficit was 14. We've made a 20 to 50 up to today. I have several meetings next week with a few other local companies, local citizens that are willing to kind of match others. But anything, anything worth that deficit can shorten.
Any other questions?
Question or not, Mr. Mayor, do we have a path forward in this conversation with Mr. Carson Orton?
Yeah, so I mean, so I was, we were approached by PDRTA and I'm not sure, we didn't ever support in financial ways. So the deficit was from us.
How we, Don headed down in the city of Marshall.
So they requested 14,000 from us, just like the city of Darlington. And we have not have supported it because prior councils had put out this policy in this ordinance. So we do not support single individual organizations like this. We do for one, we have to do for others, and that's been a prior council. So any decision that there is a way you can remove this ordinance or amend it certainly. But that was the response back in March that we talked to. So then we sent back in May before the budget elements was going on. So I do apologize, it wasn't really a deficit from our side. We had a budget beforehand. But I mean, councils certainly can make an adjustment or amendment to if they want to change the ordinance and contribute. I believe in the past, we had done some, Sharon could probably help with this. In-kind contributions from council, they felt they made in-kind contributions at some point. Is that something that brings a bell and maybe Johnny, if you recall, past conversations with PDRTA? The city had felt like it had responded with some in-kind, maybe not monetary funding. I mean, I understand that there's a question to do that.
Yeah, I was going to say, when we, when we got that letter and the request was there, I went and I looked into our financial records to see what we had done. When it started back up a few years ago, which has happened since I started, we did do a one time, I believe it was 2,500. I did search our records though for the 14,000 because that number came up. There were questions for 14,000, but we had not, decided our business for four years, we had not provided support of 14,000.
Okay.
In the past.
But what you're saying is there is a deficit now to you have.
Yes, and that 2,500 may have been enough in signage.
That's right. So the 2,500 was when y'all tried to come back, which I remember very good, if I remember that meeting. And that was a one time, you know.
Kind of rings a bell with maybe one appropriate look at everything.
We consider that being kind of signage.
Ms. Mayor?
Yes. Now that they have signage and they have their routes and they have their dedicated riders, I would like to ask council to consider 2,500.
Maybe the staff can come to us next month with either in-kind or suggestion of how to pull this.
Yes, let me see how we can either craft it in our regular ordinance or if we need to make an amendment, we can certainly bring that up.
It just takes us a month.
But that's something we can look into definitely.
It's really, really hard.
Sure.
People that have to get taxed to the doctor and mom. That's really, really, really.
Yeah, and just because you guys don't know, it's medicaid. They do provide rides, they help those three days. So if you went up with a split headache or a toothache or whatever, you have to schedule three days ads. You have to live with that for three days. We will be here same day when we can, most of the times, 24 hours. So, and as far as signage, since COVID, all of the vendors were pretty much shut down. So you'll probably see me and my crew around, who will be replacing signs. I'm sure when those will be updated, our logos a couple months, a couple months back. So a few stops will be amended. We found, I guess traffic patterns have probably changed since it started up. So a few things need to be adjusted for safety. But the signs will be renewed, a lot of them are probably worn. They're going to be replaced. So you'll see us around probably next couple of months.
Now, routes and schedule available for some cell phones and things? Because I'm thinking of Coke or, you know, when they come back.
We are updating our app. It's called PDRTA Stink. It's off in place store. On there right now, it's just rides and schedule. You can track the bus and see exactly where it is, just geotag. The next update, which you're supposed to go August 15th, is actually going to add in the demand response app where you can request a ride from your phone. It will do confirmation, send it by dispatching. They'll make sure it lines and send it right back, so it's confirmed. You can also geotag it so we know exactly where you are. So I know a lot of the housing developments or housing authority units are sometimes a little difficult to track someone down, but the geotag will bring us directly to your door.
When you say housing authority, we only actually have two properties for housing authority. Other apartment complexes are not housing authority.
Okay.
I just wanted to bring that to your attention.
Any other questions or comments, council?
Well, I also have here, because if y'all wanted to bring it back to make a sound decision on it, the 14,000 that we talked about with the deficit, is that directly related to the Hartsville? Or is that for the whole region, the 14,000? The $14,000 if it was contributing, correct? Would go directly only to the Hartsville?
Only to Hart.
And is there, would y'all be able to provide any type of financial statement so we can look at it and try to better understand it?
Yep, we do the full, we have 100% transparency with the finance department. Those that request it, they get it monthly, quarterly, bi-annually, annual, however you like it. But a lot of them, that's, if you contribute money, you want to see where it goes.
And is it broken down by line, like the Hartsville area, how much goes to Hartsville, how much goes to Darlington, all this type of thing?
But if you contribute, you come and say, I want this to go specifically to Hart. It goes specifically to Hart. The contribution that Don and Kelly would be doing that they agreed to last night, they understand that part of pulling Douglasville and Society Hill into Hartsville will pull in the Hart route. So they said such and such can go to Hart, but we need this connector. So this needs to go to First Side Hill, this needs to go to Douglasville. So that is, that would be really helpful in making that decision.
Just do that, I have a question. So how many vehicles do you have dedicated to so-called Hart line you call them?
Hart, we have, there's two buses. There's one route that we provide too. So in case the demand response picks up, we can send just a driver, the vehicle's already here. And then we, we'll see a van around town from time to time whenever. We do a few veterans that are people shop. We try to keep them off the trains and buses, so there's more one-on-one. That's what the buses or those are the vans for.
Right. Now, I've seen, kind of think of your sign, this is three parts, right? I've seen one on Fourth Street, beyond the post office. And it's on the street side, it's about ditch. So I'd assume that a person stopped a bus standing near the traffic, bring that in ditch.
I would hope not. If that's what the stop is, like I said, I know quite a few that need adjustments. I know the post office, that must be the Fourth Street line, that is one. There's one just down Carolina and another one near, I think it's actually Swift Creek.
Yeah, that one really need to take a look at.
We'll be back through. One of the things that we do do when we make so many adjustments, topical overlay will be provided to the council so that you guys can take a look at it. You know the area better than we do. I grew up here, but you live here every day. So that if you know a stop would be better or if there's a bus lane potential, which is a little bit further ahead.
I think if, the one I just mentioned, I think if you move it either south or north to an intersection, probably better than.
Than the ditch.
Yes.
One final clarification, Councilman, follow-up ask. The, I know in the past, you've had great support from the medical community, Care South and Carolina Pines. Is that still there and you're continuing to reach out to them?
It is Carolina Pines, Care South have both contributed the 14,000. For easy math, two hours a day, 14,000 for the year. So we run to 10 hours, then we need the 14,000. Yeah, sorry, my math isn't here today. But they both, they agreed to another three-year commitment that began July 1st. So we've got that dedicated for the next three years. We have spoken to a few of the private physician's offices that we've seen a lot of the demand responses are going to and they are going to get back to us here soon.
All right, so you said Carolina Pines and the medical group is right there on the backside of Carolina Pines.
Well, it's, Care South, the one that's right down here by Walmart?
Yes. So Carolina Pines is out on 151.
Yeah, that's the hospital and then Care South is actually where we save our buses down by Walmart.
Yeah, but I was, what I'm trying to say is there is a stop right there and then a, the medical group.
Yes.
The doctors, individual doctors offices.
And if any, anyone that comes to the table, whether anybody would come to the table or not, if you would like a bus stop, all they have to do is email us or give me a call because most of the thing is if you know you have riders coming to you, what they tend to do is put a stop at it or a stop there that is pre-bus DRT, which means that it's safe. So we can add to the stops and take away. Some of them are just our request. Not everyone needs to go to the post office, they will stop, but sometimes if they roll up and there's no one there, then they'll run on to the next one. But the Swift Creek, that is a lot of those. We have the driver, if they call on request, we say, we call any one of the drivers and say, hey, we got such and such. Go grab them, so they'll be on that one route. And then the next route, if they don't get a call, they'll just keep on.
I picked up a rider from Walmart that she actually knew. Obviously a little early today, you know? So that's the value I know that it has to people and the help and assistance that it gives to people.
No, they need y'all, Mr. Winston Harrow, judgment, he'll bend over backwards. He's older, he might hurt his back and he'll break, he'll bend over backwards and he'll be.
Anyone, thank you so much for saying that. And please get with Ms. Pollard there about, get the lady right behind you.
Okay.
Any information to her.
Okay.
Thank you so much. Item four B is much of our force, Chief Financial Officer.
I'm sorry, because I didn't have bigger than, I didn't have bigger than all of that. They heard it was funny and they were like, ah, no, we're far past that one. So tonight, I told Jamie yesterday when I was correcting this, I said, my goal tonight is to do the least amount of numbers that I can because every time I talk to y'all, all I get to talk about is numbers, right? So like tonight, one, I'm going to try to do it under five minutes. I'm a talker, so it's long. But I'm going to try to do the least amount of numbers I can and kind of switch the focus about what we do. When I'm up here where you're talking about budget audit, spending more money. But tonight, I really want to focus on myself. What do my department do that get us where we are each month? With our monthly reports, at the budget, at the end of the year, and kind of the day-to-day things. So what are we all about for the finance department? So one big push that we've had since, I had Brayden Ewing, he's our customer service manager, is we have been pushing hard for our customer service initiative. Within this, we have our CSRs in the department here and they will handle, they are the front line of the city. So the calls will come to them. If they don't use the auto prompt, they will be the ones answering the phone. Also, then they do all of the billing for utilities and sanitation and the airport. We work really hard to do as many invoices as we can, track as much accounting as we can, even down to the discharge permits. And that's all housed right there. Also, within that department, those five people, they work hard on court operations, which we have Brilla and Katie, our city, our clerk of court and our deputy clerk. And they hold court twice a month. And also, they will be taking people coming in all day, paying fines if they don't want to go to court. It's been an interesting year because of COVID, because they can't have court. So there is quite the backlog, but now they're getting back on track and they're getting caught up as quickly as they can. Also, we have account tables weekly. They have worked so hard. One thing too, when Brayden came in with that role that he did is, I was so nervous about it. We changed our hours on one Wednesday a month. 30 minutes later, we opened. But it gave us this opportunity to actually sit in the room together and talk about stuff. And it was something I didn't know if we would ever get there. And I remember Rebecca Ward saying, consistency. Once you start doing it and you'll start keeping the rhythm of it, it will, it will happen. And being able to do that, they have worked really hard on improvements in accounts payable, which is something else they do. Brayden now has taken over the cemetery operations and all of that. He was already handling one piece of it, but now he handles the customer service side of it. So it's kind of, it's worked pretty well that him handling that. Also, we have Amber, which is here. She handles our procurement and our risk management. So all the trips on the sidewalk, she gets the handle of that, right? All of our property claims and they're making sure, and she keeps us in line to make sure that we meet all of our vendor needs when we want a new vendor, setting up new vendors and making sure we're following our purchasing policy. Then, now that we just got that approved in the budget, we have the staff accountant and we have our senior accountant. They help me closely, daily, all the time, prepping our monthly financial reporting, analysis, and then our favorite, the budget, which the staff accountant and senior accountant were the master minds behind that budget narrative, which now I'll leave on my table, my desk, and I'll look at it daily. And I know you stole it this morning.
You're welcome.
To look at it. So it is definitely coming handy. It's super helpful and I'm looking forward to having that each year. So these are a few of the highlights I want to talk about in finance department. A few things, one thing that we were all really proud of last year is when we did the bond, right? So we did the financial restructuring, which I included a little snippet down there from S and P. It's really cool when I get to do those calls. It's definitely a little bit intimidating, but it's a great experience. I didn't think in four years I would have done two bonds. So the first one was the first one of its kind in South Carolina, which was the combined utilities bond. And yeah, also I looked back up that rating, we had gotten an A rating for that as well. But most recently, we got this A rating and it gave us an unbelievable interest rate to where we actually ended up making money off the deal when we did our personal value bond. I feel it blows the rhyme. And actually, both of the bonds we have done here have been case studies for conference events for financial advisors. They present both of our bonds and they go and present all the things they can do. As we know, we talk about, we're really proud of over the past few years, thankfully for our department heads, being good stewards of the city taxpayer dollars. We've had fund growth, fund balance growth. And as y'all know, and I get so excited, we did not have any amendments for general fund for two years in a row. When I first started, our first year, it was about a million dollars. And then we went to about 798,000. And in the past few years, because of what the department heads are doing, we haven't had to have amendment there. As I noted earlier, Brayden and the team in each department, Amber and everyone else have worked really hard. And then one thing that we push for in our department is a constant, open mind, open to change. What can we do to be more efficient and effective? Time is money, what can we do? And as I talked about, the customer feedback in response to any of y'all, our residents here, y'all would, hopefully y'all signed up for it. This is my GoHole, that's what that snippet's from. It was something Brayden worked really hard on and that we worked with Smart Fusion. I think so far, we've had about 1,200 customers sign up. So now we finally have it where you can get your bill online, pay online. Also, we have paid it by phone. Used to be our CSR said, get your grant card on my wall, go over to the grant card machine and do it. But we just started it last month and we had 60 people pay by phone. So that was 60 less calls that our employees would have to take. And if I do it like that, then I really make you proud of that department. And then, he wants to pick on me for this. I'm really into internal control, it's my audit background. Bank recon and making sure we have our segregation of duties and all of this type of thing. Cross training is really important to us and I'm proud of what the department has done in the last four years.
I think this is all, I have a question.
Oh, go for it.
I want to ask, who is S and P?
S and P, that's one of the credit rating agencies. So before you go out to the market with bonds, you're going to be, you have to get rated so that investors know. So if you got an A rating, it means, oh, this is a good one. We can go to this, we want to put our money in it. So it's standards.
That's what I want, you know, with the standard.
That's right, that's it. And then the other one will be done in graduate, but we will.
I just want to make sure, you know, because it's not indicated, so I just make sure that's what.
They told me five minutes. I almost included the entire report, but I only eat your one snippet. Pay.
Yes.
Go for it.
You used a term I haven't heard in a long time, it's cross training.
Yes.
And I'm big on that.
Very.
And I do behind that in the department is, you kind of minimize points of weakness.
That's right.
Yes, that's good.
Right, yeah, thank you. And that's, that's all my students, they've worked really hard on it. Document it out, can someone come in? What we do is we hand it to another person in the team that hasn't trained. Have you documented your policy and procedure long enough that they can do it? And it's been, it's gone really well with that.
Can the customers pay by phone at no charge?
Absolutely. And there's no charge when they pay online either.
That's different from the county.
Right. That's the reason.
No, for court funds, you are required to, that's state law. We don't have a choice on that. But for any water, sewer, utility, those type of payments, there's no need, we cover that charge.
They charge convenience.
That's right, no, we cover it. We would love for them to pay, it's much more efficient for them. COVID really helped us push ahead to where we finally have, and I know it was something they'll push us for a while. We have the business license sale, which that was down there that we're hard on that, that's all mine. And we have hospitality accommodations, actually the biggest change we have is that now you can do your utility agreement and get it started and try to do a lot of it online, even upload your driver's license. Now, there's still a point where they have to talk with you and get all of that figured out. But we're trying, and COVID really helped us push that forward actually, to do as many faceless things as possible. And then the fun part that everyone likes, the water park. Right, so usually I say I'm going to talk about the water park too, so they want me to skip over the finance. But this year, every year, we think that we've met every challenge. And each year, something different. Last year was COVID. The year before that, it was our first full season and everyone knew about us, so how we're going to handle it. And this year, people will not stop coming. So they have been cooked up for a year, so they're ready to come out. We're sold out of conveyors most days, all throughout the week. We're averaging over 1,000 a day. As of Sunday, we had almost 43,000 visitors so far this season. It's unbelievable. As I may have heard and we get up through, we have been to food and beverage outlet, which is Crackin's Kitchen. A few years ago, we built Neptune's Patio, we saw a huge increase in sales. Well, the same is true for Crackin's Kitchen. Our food and beverage, we looked at it, we have increased in sales of food and beverage just from that building because our, we're able to get more food out efficiently. 20% increase in sales in food and beverage. One great thing coming up is. One great thing coming up is NASC recognition, so we'll be getting recognition again for the water park and what we've done with our staff there. Which leads me to my favorite part about the water park, which is our seasonal staff, our youth development, which has become a passion of mine, something I didn't know I would really care about. But it kind of, the water park put it right on her, right on us. So one thing we're really pushing there is our staff development. We do internship programs, we have leadership meetings each morning, we have employee break nights, and that would be our biggest challenge this year. We do have a staff in shortage, and we are having to face, and I know Sylvester can speak to it, we are working very hard on how do we help these youth understand that people might not be the most patient. They went through a quite traumatic year with COVID, and I guess we're trying to get right again, but it is tough, because we do have longer wait times. And most of these teenagers, it is their first job. And so having to work with them and explain to them how to handle some very difficult, heated situations has been our biggest challenge this year. We're very proud of this team, I really wanted to focus on them, that's our management team. I couldn't do it without them. They give fifty to sixty to seventy hours a week at this water park in the summer. They, they do so much, the four people in those teenagers. And the next five is highlighting all of our staff. So one thing really, that's really fun and they love, is Sunday nights, Sylvester was able to go, we have employee break nights. And that's actually our narcotics manager, the guy on the end going down the mat racers against his staff. So a really good event, it is quite the family out there to see it. They've really bought in to what we're doing and what we can do for them, if we wanna help develop them, it's not just a summer job, it's having an lasting impact on their life.
Well, thank you so much for everything. Man, you finished up this one.
Please, I did.
More interested in numbers.
Uh-uh, not tonight, Johnny.
All right. Any other comments or questions? Thank you so much.
Oh.
Okay, item five is our management. Okay.
Sure, just two items for you. The first one's just to let everyone know that Little Miss South Carolina is here this week. I don't know if you guys noticed, but they're here all week, and it is their fiftieth anniversary. So it is a big deal this year. Of course, they're gonna be at the Center Theater, which is very exciting, because that is one of the premier events in that, in that building. So if you see anybody around, that's what they're all here for, we're very excited and happy to have them here. And just see them around, you know, say hello and things like that, so it's very exciting. The second one, this is an item from, Mel had gotten a call, he's not here to talk about, but I wanted to speak for him. We had a request to clear some language, and this is council's decision regarding cigar bars. So cigar bars, when the ban, the ban of smoking happened, cigar bars were specifically noted twice in the ordinance. And you have a copy of it, it was given out in the packet, but essentially, it provided an exception for it, but then at the same time, it later banned it completely. So we do have a request from this, from a local businessman who wants to open a cigar bar. Now cigar bars are a little vape shops and things like that, they do kind of, they offer a different type of climate, but it is still a smoking establishment. They do allow, in our current ordinance, the way it's written, if that is amended, it does allow the hookah pipes, which are kind of the large tall things, again, it's for tobacco use only, I must stress that. But that is, that is the idea. And again, the ordinance allowed for it, and then later on prohibited it. So speaking with Lawrence, attorney who was working with us on the matter, Lawrence, he said it could have been an oversight or could have not been. You know, I believe Johnny, were you around when they did it? So that might have just been the intent of council, was it just banned smoking inside public buildings?
I think it was with food, food and drink, and I know my initial concern was, back then, restaurants that might have underage waiters or waitresses, and they would be exploited to secondhand smoke.
Sure.
I don't know if that would be the case in a cigar bar. If it were the case, I can see the issue, if it were not the case, you know, maybe not the need.
So I mean, again, like those cigar bar places do have places smoking cigars, you do buy them on premise, that you can have them there. It does, I mean, from my perspective, it does lead you down to the potential for, for why not a vape shop then? Because that is kind of the, the next logical step in my mind, that someone could challenge us on. So it's, it's, it is difficult, now you could, again, you can do it to your challenge. So right now, there is a business owner, again, that wants to open a cigar bar, he cannot under the current ordinance. Is that something that council wants to take up? Or do you want to have some more time to think about it? We'll talk about, we don't do anything tonight, obviously, but I want to hear your thoughts.
Can you look and see, any of this file too, that ban smoking in restaurants, yet allows it on laws?
Sure.
Might handle it, you know, you don't have to read it.
It kind of, it kind of doesn't work too well, look at Columbia. It just forced the people that were spending money opening businesses downtown, cigar bars especially, to leave and go to Lexington County. That's exactly what they did. Every cigar bar that was on Main Street or just on Blossom, they all couldn't, they went across the bridge to Lexington County and did business where they couldn't do that. Florence had to make the same amendment. You no longer have to worry about underage staff because of the twenty-one-year-old orders. Now, you have to be twenty-one to have the tobacco well. So you no longer have that exact worry anymore. It works well in Florence, it works well in other cities that do that, but Columbia is a good example of what not to do when it comes to smoking and dealing. Perfect example. And you've got legislative delegation that can show you what Main Street was and what is no longer. That's something to take with you.
Do you think that Columbia was headed candidly, or was it like?
And you said.
What council would pick up and leave?
The way it's structured, they cannot have food on the inside of the cigar bar. Most people who want to have a drink and a smoke usually want food to go with it, so they, the business only went where they could. So they moved to Lexington County. Remember there was one, everyone downtown that I can even remember or even think was ever open is gone now.
You've been there, right?
Not only have I been there, like I know too long that they retired nurses.
They're twenty-one now.
Oh, wait a minute. Yeah. Pull up your form, inventory.
I'll remind council.
I'd be happy to look into what other cities are doing both ways. See, I mean, right now, we currently are probably, I mean, if you want to say heavy-handed, we just don't know. It's completely manned, and.
We included vaping later on.
I think vaping's gonna have enough of this on the legal challenge for us not to worry about in the next coming years.
We can, council can specify one and take your challenge.
Let's look at two what Florence did.
Look around that, help spend the time.
Yeah.
Like I said. Well, it's just that we set another spot.
That's what they think, um, that's what they, they have cigar bars and then hookah lounge, it's, it's gonna be.
Sure.
And for the cities, it gives someone that smokes who's already restricted from, you know, what is it, ten feet from the door of the restaurant, five feet, something like that, it, it just further penalizes someone that smokes because of secondhand smoke. But it does not impede drinking that off.
Well, I mean, just to throw, I mean, this was, it's other than like, I'm not getting people knocking on the doors saying, I wanna do this in Parksville. This was, again, one business owner, and they approached the mayor and wanted us to talk about it. I do agree, I mean, I can, we'll, we'll definitely do some due diligence and we'll see him. Perhaps I'll bring this back in, in the next council meeting, give you guys a quick update about what we're at, and then we can make a decision.
Emphasizing completely language.
Absolutely. Yeah. We, we, essentially, we, the council at the time, they allowed it if it met a certain threshold, and that threshold in the language was that it had to sell thirty percent of it as tobacco products, to be considered a cigar bar, and then a cigar bar, but then it just went ahead and banned it with the later language, so. But I'll, I'll do some research, I'll get back to you guys. I just wanted to start that dialogue.
Okay, thank you.
That's all.
All right. Okay. Under unfinished business, item six, public hearing final reading, ordinance forty-four eighteen, ordinance commending the City of Parksville, Chapter Two, Administration, Article Four, Lords, Commissions, and Committees, Division One, General Inceptions, Two, Dash Two Seventy-One, through Two, Dash Two Eighty-One. I declare a public hearing open. If you'd like to address counsel and the ordinance, please come forward, state your name and address for the record, and manage your comments to the three members of this. Declare a public hearing closed. Is there a motion on ordinance forty-four eighteen?
Mr. Chairman, I'd make a motion to review the ordinance forty-four eighteen, and this will be.
Okay. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of ordinance forty-four eighteen, please signify by saying aye. Opposed by no, there is no opposition, ordinance forty-four eighteen passes. Under new business, item seven, resolution oh-seven, dash twenty-one, oh-one, express intentions to give Parksville to cause the city to be reimbursed with its process proceeds of lease purchase financing for certain costs associated with acquisition and flipping certain capital items located in the city and other matters relating thereto. Is there a motion on resolution oh-seven, twenty-one, oh-one?
Do you want, do you want me to publish it or do you want me to keep reading?
I'll let you publish it. I do still believe in.
Publish as said.
Yes.
Take your vote.
Okay. Is there a motion on resolution oh-seven, twenty-one, oh-one?
Second.
Okay, motion in second, any discussion?
No discussion, just a thank you to the city manager, and to the city, to the attorney, Mr. Lawrence, today could help with some answers on questions that I put out to all you guys. He satisfied my answers there. The people sitting in the audience and everything, we talked about, I think it's just common to, to city councils and everything, where we spend money and get our money back through the revenues that come in, it's just, it's a lot of it in legalese and sometimes harder to understand that they weren't able to bring clarity to it.
Labor terms always feel a bit good. I don't feel anxious to explain what you just read there.
Essentially, we're, 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 we're spending the money now, we're repairing some back with these capital purchases, so good job, guys.
All right, so we've got motion in second. All those in favor, signify by saying aye. As opposed by no, there is no opposition, resolution passes. Item eight, would the manager please publish?
Absolutely. Resolution zero-seven, dash twenty-one, dash oh-two, approval to extend utility funds for waterline extension to serve new development.
Okay, you've heard the presentation, is there a motion on resolution oh-seven, twenty-one, oh-two?
Make a motion, we approve, resolution oh-seven, twenty-one, oh-two.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion?
Just to get in just a moment, people sitting in the audience, this is about a new subdivision that's coming in, out close to the hospital. The city and staff did a wonderful analysis, so we spent a little bit of money, and having to pay back on this was a lot of money, excuse me, over time, it makes good financial sense to do it.
Okay. All those in favor, signify by saying aye. As opposed, there is no opposition, resolution oh-seven, twenty-one, oh-two passes. Item number nine, this is manager.
Resolution zero-seven, dash twenty-one, dash oh-three, is resolution commending the City of Parksville to providing a program fee for the school association in South Carolina and NASC, retail recruitment training program, partnership with the retail commission, the city's accepted into the program, and supporting the city's application there too.
Okay, thank you. Is there a motion on resolution oh-seven, twenty-one, oh-three?
Second.
Okay, any discussion?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor?
I wanted to ask which employees are, what employees.
So our intent is to say this for myself and our extended units of economic development director, this is a retail training that one of my mentors, Todd Lever, started. Essentially, it teaches cities how to go after bigger corporations and talk to them to let them in the city. It does end in a, with two things. One, it ends in a marketing analysis study, which for five thousand dollars, that was money well spent, is, for instance, just for background, I spent twenty thousand dollars to do street ticketing, that's something, just, and that was for marketing for me to come in. And then second is that we will be going to the national convention that has everyone there with the backing of people who've done this before. So it's a very good opportunity, it's a person that's kind in South Carolina, and it's just an exciting opportunity that I would love to particularly be part of.
Can you, I come back to questions. One other thing, in the email also that I sent out to you, I'll ask about how we would answer the questions that are part of that NASC petition. And Daniel, what I was getting at on that is the answers to these, pretty good little questions, would give council more insight into how y'all are going to approach economic development. Because you basically have to tell NASC, what are we doing, why are we, who do we identify as economic target in development, and some pretty good little questions on that. Because I would ask if, once you have, if this is approved, once you've completed that, how about push that out to council, which is so to look at.
Absolutely, what you handle. Yeah, sure, absolutely. That's gonna be, I mean, of course, it's all public. Yeah, the application, we, we want to get the resolution passed first, and then we're gonna, Shay and I will knock that out. And essentially, we want to look at things that we've already talked about as a group, certain different areas, but mostly, it's for this purpose, it is to look at our marketability for the city. But we definitely will share it with everyone, and we'll go through everything, that way we're all on the same page of what we're trying to accomplish.
That's your best to go.
That's all.
Yeah.
Exactly.
Thank you. You're right to tell my questions, which.
Mr. Mayor.
All right, to make sure the money that they spend on this trip comes back to the mayor's office.
Is that, is that, no, you're.
It is already led to more, uh, every month, so.
I read the Post and Courier articles later.
Yeah. We watch it, we watch it.
Watch out. Okay, I think we've had a motion in second. All those in favor of resolution oh-seven, twenty-one, oh-three, please signify by saying aye. As opposed by no, there is no opposition, resolution passes. All right, resolution oh-seven, twenty-one, oh-four.
Sir, it's approval to apply for a South Carolina drinking water revolving loan on D W N S.
Okay, is there a motion to pass resolution seven, twenty-one, oh-four?
Mr. Mayor, I'd make a motion to have it pass, resolution seven, twenty-one, oh-four.
Second. Okay, I'd like to make an amendment to this one. This was some kind of convoluted language, I guess, that we got tangled up in. And my amendment is as follows. Please revise the second to last paragraph in this resolution to read as follows. That the city will grant to the state authority a pledge of and lean on all revenues of the city's combined water, sewer, and water park enterprise system and repayment of the money. Okay, have a second. Second. Okay, give it a little. There you go. Appreciate that.
I'll clarify this, because our, it's the language, it's a little bit cemented, our, our, our loan, our, sorry, our fund is a combined, all those things, so we needed to specify that exactly. So in the resolution, although it did say our water is, we probably wanted to clarify that actually, so it was an oversight on our part, but thank you for the amendment.
Oh, sure. Spontaneous, we came up with.
It's nice, everybody caught that.
Okay, so we vote on the amendment first, all those in favor of the proposed amendment, please signify by saying aye. As opposed by no, there is no opposition, resolution passes. And now on the resolution itself, all those in favor on resolution oh-seven, twenty-one, oh-four, please signify by saying aye. As opposed by no, there is no opposition, resolution oh-seven, twenty-one, oh-four passes. Okay, Mr. Mayor.
This is first reading of ordinance forty-four nineteen. It's an ordinance that the City of Parksville has authorized lease purchase financing in in an amount of not exceeding three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Another management to go to.
Okay, the present, presentation, ordinance forty-four nineteen, is there a motion on this ordinance?
Motion to approve ordinance forty-four nineteen.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second. Any discussion?
Yes, I'd like to ask the manager to give a catch to us and to everybody about this , please, rather than just saying we're gonna borrow from the county. Just, you know, feel simple, good.
Sure. So, essentially, this is, it's better for us to, when we're making large purchases like this, for instance, this is five police cars that we're looking at purchasing. So, it makes more sense for us to put this in the capital lease thing, it's essentially, oh yeah, it's a.
Of course. So, this is, we do this each year, right? We were fortunate enough, last year, we had off on capital purchases because of COVID, right, in the planning of it. So, this is actually for, if you look at it, it's in the first paragraph of the resolution earlier, because this is connected to the regulation from earlier. But this will be for four police cars, five, they had insurance for it.
I saw it's pulling up. It's a police car, it's golf cart equipment, and it's also for the roof of the police station and for a parking lot for fire station. So, we do capital lease on all these things, that allows us to manage our money.
That's right. We don't want to drain our fund, especially with the interest rates that we do have. This will be, I believe, a five-year lease, we won't go longer than that, so it's quick.
Keeps our.
And it's easy to get funded, so it's a really simple process.
So, you have no qualms about being able to go out and find?
No, this is, this is very, it's common practice for all cities and it's something that it does keep us cash, not cashing forward, keeps our fund balance intact, but allows us to, we have borrowing power on this, it's good to go.
You specialize in those things. Who's the ones that you go to?
Lawrence, they're our financial advisors. They shop it out, they get the best rate, four thousand, they'll present it. They put it out for bid, and with that, and they tell me, right? So, when we were purchasing the building next door, they're like, absolutely do not use your cash for that, right? Don't use, I mean, don't do a debt financing, it wouldn't be worth it. When I present this to them and I send them the list of the items, they did the research, that's why we're going to ordinance, because it is a little bit different the way we're going to buy it because of the real property involved. But they're the ones that handle that process and he's, Lawrence, very upfront with me of like, Karen, I'd love the business if it's worth it, you know, but I'm not gonna get y'all some money off the line. This one is a no brainer. When you have these type of items, they are easy to get funded because they know that they're secured about easy collateral, where they can get a really good interest rate.
Okay, thank you for that.
I just wanted to, on the resolution seven twenty-one oh-one, is that the, is this the one that we had before?
So, resolution, the first resolution authorizes us to go ahead and make the expenditures to get the process started. It really is for things such as a police car.
Right.
Those things have such high turnaround, and in order to get in this fiscal year, we need to order it the month that a budget is allowed. So, we can't do this process until July anyway, because it's starting to be budgetary. So, that's why we go ahead and authorize ourselves to buy this up and then we refund ourselves, again, according to our resolution within eighteen months. It's a, hey, we're not robbing Peter because we're both Peter and Paul.
How does the plan that worked within eighteen months and on a five-year lease, how did that?
Oh, no, no. We already bought it. So, what it does is it allows us to go ahead and purchase it, but I have to have to reimburse it because once I get the capital done and the money from the bank, it allows me to go ahead and enable make the purchases because I know that they've been fighting hard to get some cars out of another county.
Should we get the money and then purchase?
Definitely not. I just have to make sure I do it within eighteen months.
I think Chief Bird's back there looking to find fire trucks in this ordinance.
What's he get? He's getting the parking lot.
He's getting the money then.
Now, he's gonna be one on the song.
Eight hundred miles, what a truck cost to.
Some of the new ones are hitting the mill.
The last one involved was seven hundred and fifty thousand.
I'll push that one out first.
After Mobile Washine Hall and the new making living.
I gave him a fire truck and something in the bathroom. We, I mean, I gave him the parking lot.
Oh, well, I didn't repick that one?
No. And you told me that takes at least a year, so we're going with a really plan for that. It takes you a year to get that filled, doesn't it? Yeah.
Board of directors.
All right, I think we've had a motion and a second on ordinance forty-four nineteen. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
As opposed by no. There is no opposition. Ordinance forty-four nineteen is passed. All right, item number twelve, Mr. Manager.
Yes, sir, it's ordinance forty-four twenty, first reading. It's a lease portion of tax back number zero-five-six, zero-six, zero-two, zero-eight-seven, located at one-one-four South Fourth Street to Brandystown Department of Public Safety Station.
Okay. You've heard the title of the presentation. Is there a motion on ordinance forty-four twenty?
Motion to approve ordinance forty-four twenty.
Mayor. Okay, in discussion?
Yes, one question that's not in what I see in front of me, but was in there to, was in our package. How is it that it just came to be that we knew that we owned this and, you know, what should we have known before?
Right, you might recall, this actually came up this past year, and council did vote to lease this in the last year. So, this was a mistake, I believe, of the realtor or the purchaser, which is Brandystown Park. Essentially, when they did their due diligence, they went to go see what property, what property they were buying, and they neglected to find that there is a piece of property stripped that the city still owns, that essentially is essential to the property because it gives her PDA access. It wasn't, I don't think it was the intent of council to hold on to this piece of property, it wasn't intended the city to keep this from her as a gadget, but essentially, that's what happened. Once they found out about it and they were trying to do their site plans, they discovered that there was a strip of land that the city still retained and that in order for her to move forward, we need to lease it to her. The narrative, that's, we do want to move forward again with leasing because it's five dollars, I believe, a year, because again, we're trying to, this wasn't something we do. But I do believe, and I agree, that we need to probably look at just selling this to her to clean this up, allow her or whoever owns it to take the property into itself to make that piece whole, because it's gonna come up again and again and again with someone we're changing it again. It was literally just, I think it was a miss, when they were doing their purchasing from, not even from us, this, because we had sold it to another entity, and then they bought it from another entity, this was, it should have been caught.
The title search just didn't get whatever.
Apparently not, and so it was only in the site plan, I believe, and they were coming out to our, I believe, the plant commission. We explained that there was a section of land that was ours and she could not move forward until.
It's just a little sliver.
It's a little sliver. It's right on the property line where the parking lot is, that gives her handicap spaces. So, it is essential.
We are going to have an appraise and offer it to her for purchase. Is that part of the lease?
Not, not in this part. We're just asking for it to be leased or correct, and then we should look into getting an appraise in this next year, I believe.
Yeah, we should determine fair market value and let her purchase it for that.
Yeah. So, we'll press the next step and then lease it first and then find out the value and offer it to her and hope she just takes it and will purchase.
That'll be my recommendation.
Any other comments, questions?